Article 6 Public Hearings Resolution 2309 Approve the request for retail off-premise beer and wine license for Suica Holdings Incorporated doing business as Busy Bee Marathon at 1801 Sixth Avenue.
No changes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
Ordinance 204426 zoning request number 1365-20 rezone attractive lands containing approximately 32.1 acres and located east of Canterbury Lane or Avenue Southwest. It's R4 multi-family residential district to R3 single-family residential district. First reading was September the 14th. May I?
No changes.
Any questions?
No questions for me.
Ordinance 20-2413 rezoning request number 1354-20 approximately 40.9 acres located north of Dowdick Street southwest and west of 14th Avenue southwest from R2 to R3. First reading September 14th. Any changes?
No changes either.
All right, resolution. Resolution 2310 approve municipal utilities board expenditure of $119,343 for purchase of a 2021 Kenworth T370 tandem axle dump truck.
There are no changes.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Resolution 2311 approve the municipal utility board expenditure of $240,000 for the purchase of an electroscan info asset planner wastewater inspection unit.
There are no changes.
Resolution 20312 approve request from T-Mobile for a special use permit to modify equipment on the existing tower located at 1824 Presbyterian Tower Southwest.
Is that David? No.
Resolution 20313 approve request from T-Mobile for a special use permit to modify equipment on the existing tower located at 100 Wilson Street Northeast. Resolution 20314 approval of frameworks architecture for Austenville Park improvements. Allen.
Charles, did you see what they were going to do to that?
We did go over at the work session last week. I did have a question, but if Allen shows up, I'll give him a question.
Allen, you're up, buddy. Hey, you're on time. We're on the frameworks architecture. I always had a question.
You mentioned last work session that there was some questions asked of the community around there. When did that occur?
That was during our consolidated plan process.
So it was part of what was advertised in the paper?
Yes, sir.
And how did you receive those comments? Were they emailed, that kind of thing?
Yeah, and then just talking to the, I mean, then the Parks and Rec Department just talking to residents who were using, who were actually using the facility.
So there was some dialogue, but no actual meeting?
No, well, other than just the, our annual action plan meetings that we had.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Resolution 20315 award bid 20-025 for repairs of the landfill grinder to Thompson Tractor Company.
There's no changes there, Mr. Charles.
Any questions?
No.
Resolution 20316 authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Q. Wright McAnally for project management and civil engineering design for a new construction and demolition disposal site. Wanda.
No changes.
Any questions?
No.
Resolution 20317 authorize the purchase of new Cat D7 Dozier in the amount of $153,527. Funding source landfill fund. Wanda.
There are no changes, but it's, the amount is $653,527.
That's a little different.
Thank you.
Did everybody catch that? That's on the page. It's $653,000 instead of $153,000.
Yeah, oh.
So he'll change that.
It's only off half a mil.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Resolution 20318 authorize the purchase of 2021 truck with water tank in the amount of $113,748.70. Funding source the landfill 082.
No changes, and that amount is correct.
Thank you.
Resolution 20319 authorize the purchase of John Deere utility tractor loader and cutter.
No changes.
Resolution 20324 establish health insurance cost sharing. Resolution 20320 approve Daniel Danville Road emergency signal for new fire station. Carl.
No changes.
Resolution 20321 authorize the mayor to execute Bib Garrett Aldott permit.
No changes.
Resolution 20322 authorize the mayor to execute a consulting services agreement with TTL Incorporated for geotechnical and environmental services for a new construction and demolition disposal site. Wanda.
No changes.
Resolution 20323 declare surplus of municipal vehicles no longer needed by the fire department. Okay.
No changes.
Resolution 20326 approve Turner Searls Auditorium to be named the C. Ronald Matthews Auditorium. Any questions? Ordinance is ordinance 204431 declare surplus in sale 710 Wallman Street Northwest. First reading October the 5th. No changes. Boards and committees appoint Jack Bryan to the Downtown Decatur Downtown Redevelopment Board term expiring June 21st, 2026. Appoint Marley Schmidt to the Decatur Downtown Redevelopment Board term expiring June 21st, 2026. Appoint Susan Wiley to the Personnel Board board term expiring 1231, 2024.
And that's the one that was just added Friday?
Correct.
Yeah, well, I guess, and Paige called me about that, my only thought was, was that, is that everyone that, is that all the applicants that have applied for that?
No, but the others have all gone out as well. Any, any other applicants? It's been a while.
There have been Keith McTaggart and Miracle is on the DBZ already, but Keith Taggart is, yes.
So Troy Butler's just been serving at the pleasure of the council?
Yes, he has. He has an extensive background in HR. Well, he is an HR professional, yes, and I do believe, I have a concern because we said we would try to keep three HR professionals on the board. And right now, we've got Harold Gilmore, we've got Dearest, Dearest, we've got Nora, and we've got Pam. Pam and Nora are HR professionals. Troy?
Does Pam have to come on?
Pam will probably.
What are her terms?
I think it's close. Rochelle, do you know?
Yes, Pam's term expires December 31st, 2020.
So we're going to be down to one HR professional on the board.
Then I've got a question, Council, I guess, only in a television station and recording and things of that nature, does that present a conflict of interest?
That's a Herman question.
That's a Herman question.
To the FCC, if that's a...
Well, what Paige shared with me on Friday, I mean, I did share that, you know, I wouldn't be able to support Suzie for this position, but over the weekend, that thought came into my mind, and I, I don't know if there's anything, maybe Herman can share with us, but my thoughts on that, and it's, it really comes from the people in my district as well, is it's usually not a good representation. I know that Councilman Kirby has been on her show on a pretty much probably a weekly basis. She hasn't asked me to be on her show, and so, in my opinion, I mean, I don't, maybe others she has asked to be on her show as well, but it seems a little one-sided, so that was my concern.
I was having a conversation with Bank before we started, and Bank, can you serve on the board?
No, I can't serve, I can't. If anybody that works for Bank can't do any kind of political, can't bank agree to it.
Let me say, she does not do standard traditional news reporting, okay? And at the same time, this woman has done so much for Decatur. She's served on the One Decatur Committee, she's served on Ray Long's Growth Committee, she's served on a school advisory committee, she has served on so many things and been so proactive, and the mayor even quoted when the Dog Park thing occurred, that if you wanted something done in Decatur, you get Suzie Wiley involved. So I think the concerns here are being manufactured and are not real for someone who could be very valuable to this city.
Well, I don't disagree, I think that she has been, she is a valuable asset to this city. I think personally, it's a wrong mix of her talents with what is needed on this board. We said we would try to keep three HR professionals. We are going to be down to one. So to me, it's about getting the right representation. I don't disagree, Suzie, but it is and has been a wonderful, and you left off the library board, so, I mean, she's, she's extremely important. I just don't think that this is the right mix for her talent.
And you said going to be, not down to one, but going to be down.
So I'm in shock, Suzie is a board citizen, and there are other boards that she would be involved in as far as a board member serving in that capacity, but this one, Personnel Board, which is a governing board regarding our personnel, our employees, that's a very serious position. And now, do you know any qualifications that she has?
She has dealt with personnel issues very frequently over the years, dealt with personnel issues. She has been involved in many communities, she's been involved in a broad spectrum of different types of companies before. And I would point out, when she first came to town, she was actually placed on the Princess Theater Board, and then when the steel mill closed, people removed her from that board. So you've got a perception of this that's, that's coming from a particular social concept in Decatur, and I don't think it's healthy for this community for that type of stuff to be advocated.
Yeah, and I probably would just disagree, I don't think it's more social, I just think from what I've heard is just a mix of personalities and not meshing and not working well together, but I'm not going to say anything personal.
I don't even have anything about the personalities, mine's about the particular skill sets that someone brings to the table, and that's...
I agree with that.
But I'll say this, that Personnel Board was set up, and we all know, and we looked at that by legislative act, so it's to keep politics out of this thing, and Personnel Board for a municipality such as the city of Decatur is totally different from any Personnel Board that in the private sector, it's not the same thing. So when we say that we want someone with personnel background to sit on a Personnel Board for this municipality, it actually is saying that we're pulling someone in who has a different perspective about how Personnel Board should be run than we have in municipal settings. So for, I don't agree with the fact that we had to have people from personnel backgrounds simply from, because we're not going to get people from a municipal personnel perspective on this, we're going to get people from private sector personnel perspective, and I think they're totally different. And again, there are some similarities, but one does not make, does not match clearly with the other, so I don't have a problem with this, I don't have a problem with this at all.
About the conflict of interest?
I think that's something the board members are going to have to weigh in on.
That's manufactured.
Well, I'm not the cause of the industry, I don't think from a financial standpoint or anything like that. The only question is, she could not use information she gathered into Personnel Board being part of her professional role, and that's not a thing I can say for children.
I would be fine with that if she signed something stating she wouldn't.
Then every board member that gets appointed something has to sign something that they won't use that in a similar manner.
Charles, you're making it sound like we're making this personally. The only thing that we're trying to do is...
I think to make sure it's political.
No, sir.
No, sir, not at all, and I resent that.
Represent it all you want to.
I am, and I just think that it boils down to skill sets, and the fact that this council, the majority of this council said that they agreed that we needed to maintain a minimum of three personnel-related professions on this board.
I'm not sure if I said that, if I did, I'm going to take that back, because after the year of looking at it, we've got some serious issues. Last week, we spoke of it for several minutes, of the issues that have been pushed on. Unfortunately, things need to change on that board, and I think we all are aware of that, but I'll hold my opinion, but I don't know that, and I agree with Mr. Jackson, that HR in the rural world, if you will, in municipality world are totally different, laws are different, completely different. And I think, Rochelle, you're on the line, would you not agree?
I would not agree that they're completely different, there are some differences, yes.
But there are different laws that could be quite catastrophic to the municipality, is that correct? If not, follow.
Well, that would be, that could be said for any employer, the difference for this city is that we have the merit system rule, which is basically an employment policy guideline, that's a legislative act. HR is HR, no matter the environment, it's about the people and how you treat the people and take care of the people, it's the application of the policies and procedures that might be different in this setting, and the key difference is the due process and property rights to position.
And I agree with the merit system rules, we do have those unfortunately in the past several years, and definitely we've not adhered to them, or we would not be in the situation we are currently, but I say if we're going to go by the rules, we go by the rules.
I'm not exactly sure what, what, what you mean by that, and that's all right, but there are some things that have happened over the years that have been some challenges long before I got here, but we're doing the best we can with the information we have, and I don't disagree that municipal HR management is different.
But I think it's different from the perspective that in the private sector, HR is designed to be the, be, and if you will, a tool of the company itself. In this particular setting, because of, I mean, it was set up as legislative act, so it's to take politics out, in this particular setting, it's set up so that the Personnel Board is, is as big an advocate for the employee as it is for the city, and as big and vice versa. And so I think that's what we fail to realize, is that Personnel Department's not supposed to be always the advocate for the city, it's supposed to be the advocate for the employee as well as the city, and that's what I kind of, that's what I fail to see at times.
Well, you know, it's unfortunate you feel that way, but I agree with you 100%. Well, you know, it's unfortunate you feel that way, but I agree with you 100%. We're an advocate for the employee as well for the city, and we've got to find that balance.
That's exactly right. It's got to be an equal balance for both. And that's why I don't know that this, the push to have a Personnel person from a private sector is as crucial as we're making it out to be.
So I'm going to nominate Keith McTaggart for this board.
I guess that would be D on the...
Do you have, I don't have his, any of his information. Can you get that?
I can get it printed.
I'd be good to send Suzie's, too.
Can we ask that the council interview the candidates?
Usually, we have time to like at least call them and talk with them.
Make a decision based on, you know, who's voting for both here?
I mean, it sounds like there's at least a majority of favor for the person that's listed, even though Councilman Art has asked for Keith to be on there.
I don't mind Mr. McTaggart being on there.
Would you consider doing an interview?
I know him, I don't need to do an interview, I just wanted to look at his paperwork.
So do we push this...
You think that is D? Is that what you said?
Well, otherwise, we push it to the next agenda.
Well, I plan on making the motion on C and dealing with it today.
Okay. How many places do we have? Did we say we had two coming up on the Personnel Board?
Mm-hmm.
But then theoretically, we can vote on two.
And if it's not political, don't go ahead and add it.
Worse. Pam.
What is it, Stacy?
Pam.
If you're anticipating, I added it, I did not.
She's the one running out.
Mr. Art, excuse me?
Was your idea?
No, it was not my idea, thank you very much. I was called that someone had asked about it.
Well, regardless, we've usually worked well together to state that we would agree to put it on there, majority would agree, or we would wait till the next work session. So Stacy, you were saying there's two?
Yes, and I have printed...
So then, we could also put Keith on there. When is Pam's term up?
December.
December.
I believe is what we were told, December.
Well, she, is this her first term?
Uh-uh.
Okay, all right. Well, that will be for the next council to decide, but it sounds like we have two people that are interested. So Keith would have an opportunity to serve if the next council deems...
And that's what's interesting to me, is that we're getting this presented as an either-or, when it could be both.
Well, we just learned that. I mean, Paige asked for Keith's information. I don't have information on either one of them, other than just being told, you know, a little bit about both of them or personal experience.
Well, she's on the DDRA.
Can only serve on one board. Okay.
Anything else? I will say for Mr. Art, I did not call about this. This was not my idea. In fact, you can ask Ms. Hill, because I called Ms. Hill after I was made aware of it. Kristy?
It was, I don't know who brought it to your attention.
Thank you.
She submitted an application.
She submitted an app. My thought was that I didn't know there was an opening, and typically, this council works well together to state, we probably would put it on the next agenda. So it, being that it was Friday, it seems a little rushed, because we all haven't reviewed the applications by all interested. So my, in my opinion, I would wait until the next work session.
And Ms. Hill, as I shared with you that day, her application for this board has been out there over a year. I had no idea of that. And so that was...
But that doesn't mean that we respond, like, what's that, poor planning, doesn't, you know, institute a emergency on our case, you know?
I'm not saying it does, I'm just saying it's unfortunate that someone who wanted to serve in the city had had an open application for over a year. You know, again, it was called to my attention Friday. I did not call anyone anticipating it. In fact, I was working on my Jeep, Mr. Art, if you'd like to know the truth.
And another little factor in this thing is that as long as I've been watching this council, and that goes back well over 20 years, almost every board has had terms that had already been expired and the person serving over their expired time. Not that's offense, we appreciate the service.
Right.
But when you get an application for somebody and they're willing to serve, that's the time to act. And when you've got boards that always have potentially open spaces, and to say, well, we didn't know there was an opening. We've had openings for a long, long time. And if anything, we've had a failure to get good qualified people willing to volunteer their time and efforts.
Well, I mean, it's on the agenda, so either we table it or we leave it on there, and then come December, when Pam rolls off, we can address whoever's next, whoever else is interested.
If you're going to have other ones roll off, you'll have other opportunities to add to that board.
Right, exactly.
Do you still want Keith added as D or not?
I do.
I'm getting his application.
Anything else? Thank you, see you in a minute.
We currently have two openings waiting.
Call to order. Mr. Stover is going to say our invocation and our pledge is going to... Thank you, Alan.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you this morning, God, God, we just thank you so much for your many blessings, and God, we thank you for this country, God, and the freedom that we have. God, I just pray that you'll just be with this council, God, as they make the decisions that they need to make. God, I pray that you give them the wisdom, God, to make those decisions. God, I pray that you give them the courage, God, to make them also. God, we just thank you for your many blessings, God, and for everything that you do for us. And God, I just pray that you'd be with this country as we go into this election, God. God, I know that you already know who's going to be in office, God, and I just pray that you would just be with this country, God, as we move forward. God, thank you for everything that you do for us, God. Be with us, lead, guide, and direct us, in Jesus Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alan. Roll call, please. Bibby?
Present.
Art?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Kirby?
Here.
Agenda items will be acted upon if they meet the guidelines necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the governmental body or a matter of necessity to respond to COVID-19. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
May I have Mr. Kirby, the second, my Mrs. Hill? Roll call, please. Bibby?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Proceed on with a vote of five to zero. I will say, after saying that, I did speak with Ms. Judy Smith this morning. She'd just like for me to reiterate that we are now back in red, and everyone, please be careful, wear your mask, wash your hands, and be responsible citizens. Thank you. Public hearings, Resolution 2309, approve request for retail off-premise beer and wine license for Sowage Holdings Incorporated doing business as Busy Bee Market Marathon at 1801 Sixth Avenue Southeast, Decatur, Alabama. Sal?
Good morning, Ms. Bibby, Mayor and Council. This is Julie Wells from the Revenue Department. This is a request for a new alcohol license recommended for approval.
Thank you, Julie. This being the time and place of a public hearing, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, you may speak now. No one from the public wanting to speak. We will entertain this motion to, or this meeting to be closed, public hearing to be closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion, my Mr. Kirby, second, Mr. Jackson, discussion. Roll call, please. Bibby?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Resolution 2309 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 24426, rezoning request number 136520, rezoning a tract of land containing approximately 32.1 acres and located east of Canterbury Avenue Southwest, R4, multifamily residential district to R3, single-family residential district, reading 91420. Matt?
Yes, ma'am. The applicant is John Plunk, and just like you mentioned, the rezoning 13.1 acres from R4 to R3, and that's it.
This being the time and place of public hearing, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, you may speak now. No one from the public wanted to speak on the matter, we'll declare this hearing closed, entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion, my Mr. Jackson, the second, my Mr. Kirby, discussion. I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Jackson, for going to Mr. Plunk and speaking with him, and I know that the residents over there, you and I met with them, and they're very appreciative of that, so thank you for doing that.
I appreciate the meeting with residents, too.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Ordinance number 24426 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 24413, rezoning request number 135420, approximately 40.9 acres, located north of Dalphet Street Southwest and west of 14th Avenue Southwest, from R2 to R3, first reading 91420. Matt?
Yes, ma'am. This is the companion piece to the previous ordinance. This is 40.9 acres, and it is from R2 to R3. And I also want to say, Mr. Jackson, thank you very much for everything that you have done.
Thank you, ma'am. You facilitated everything that we needed, and I appreciate your effort.
Wonderful, thank you.
This being the time and place of a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on this issue, you may speak now. No one from the public wanting to speak on this issue of rezoning. We'll declare this public hearing closed, and we'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Mr. Jackson, motion. Second, my Mr. Kirby, discussion. And Matt, this is a total of 70.3 acres? It's a big chunk of land over there.
Yes, ma'am, it is. It is quite a big piece of land. The southern part is where they may, it looks like the development will occur first.
Hope to see some nice houses over there. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Ordinance number 244...
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Ordinance number 24413.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Matt. Approved five to zero. Resolution 2310, approve MUB expenditure of $119,343 for purchase of 2021 Kenworth T370 tandem axle dump truck.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bibby. This is Jimmy Evans, gas water wastewater operations manager for Decatur Utilities. This is for the purchase of a 2021 Kenworth T370 tandem axle dump truck. This truck will be used in conjunction with our wastewater crew to perform rehab and replace defective sewer mains, sewer services, and perform point repairs on our wastewater collection system. We recommend purchasing this dump truck from Truck Works Kenworth in Madison, Alabama. It does come with a five-year extended warranty for the purchase price of $119,343, and we will request approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion. Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2310 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution number 2311, approve MUB expenditure of $240,000 for purchase of ElectroScan InfroAssist Planner Wastewater Inspection Unit.
Yes, Ms. Bibby, thank you. Again, this is Jimmy Evans. This will be for the purchase of a new wastewater inspection unit called ElectroScan. It comes with InfoAsset Planner software, and this unit will be integrated and utilized alongside our existing CCTV inspection methods to help quantify and pinpoint inflow and infiltration inside the sewer collection system. This unit is pulled through the sewer main that calculates the volume of potential inflow and infiltration. The technology will also provide an additional layer of quality control assurance by assuring that all newly rehabbed pipes are operating as designed. The InfoAsset Planner software will also compile CCTV and ElectroScan pipe investigation data and ADU in prioritization of our sewer layout work. We looked at purchasing this versus contracting this work out. To contract it out, it's about $4 a foot. If you do 100,000 feet, that's $400,000. We can purchase this unit for $240,000, and so we recommend this approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hill. Second by Mr. Kirby. Discussion. Jimmy, it's really neat. I remember y'all showing the video of it. That's pretty cool, so thank you for being advanced in our city.
Thank you, Ms. Bibby.
Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2311 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution 2312, approve request from T-Mobile for a special use permit to modify equipment on the existing tower located at 1824 Presbyterian Tower Southwest.
Looking at approval by senior mayor, it doesn't appear to be any different than what we had before, so it's okay if you don't wear a 517 to be approved.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Hill. Second by Mr. Jackson. I believe it was an upgrade, a technical upgrade, six tentas. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2312 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution 2313, approve request for T-Mobile for special use permit to modify equipment on the existing tower located at 100 Wilson Street Northeast.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hill. Second by Mr. Kirby.
It appears to have this cut sheet requirements with the tower, but it's just a plan that it says, so I don't know whether any changes are going to happen.
Where's that on Wilson Street?
Is that the old TV station room? It may not. No, it's not. It's not.
That's fine.
It's on Wilson Street.
It's not.
That's why.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It's, don't throw it up there.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2313 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution 2314, approve, approval of framework architecture for Austenville Park improvements. Alan?
Yes, ma'am. This will just be to do a design at the Austenville Park improvements that we're looking to maybe remove the tennis courts and do some green space and walking trails and pedestrian lighting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2314 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Resolution 2315, award bid number 20025 for repairs of the landfill grinder to Thompson Tractor Company. Mr. Booth?
Yes, ma'am. This is Charles Booth, purchasing agent for the city. This was a bid to refurbish the clutch assembly on the grinder for the landfill. We got two responses. One was a no bid, and the other was Thompson Tractor for $57,428.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hill. Second by Mr. Kirby. Discussion. Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2315 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution number 2316, authorize the mayor to execute professional service agreement with P. Wright McAnally for project management and civil engineering design for a new construction and demolition disposal site.
Hello, Council and Mayor. This is Wanda Tyler with the landfill and recycling department. We're reaching capacity of our construction and demolition area, which is sales 2 through 9, and we're working with P. Wright McAnally to design a permit and also oversee the construction of 60 acres east of the sales 2 through 9. The amount of their proposal is $56,259, which we budgeted this year, this fiscal year, through Fund 082.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion. Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2316 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution number 2317, authorize the purchase of a new CAT D7 dozer in the amount of $153,527 funding source to the landfill. Wanda?
The, we're requesting the purchase of a D7 dozer in the amount of actually $652,882. This will be funded. We budgeted it for this, for this fiscal year and from the landfill fund. We are in need of a third dozer at this site. We've spent over $40,000 leasing a dozer this year, and we're in need mainly because we're growing landfill, but also we need reliable equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion.
Ms. Tyler, quickie question for you. You gave us an adjusted amount at the pre-meeting, and the amount that I just heard read off was different yet again, so can we just be very clear on what amount we're approving, please?
Yes. The amount total is $652,882. The, there's discounts that, from Sourcewell, which is 19% of the purchase price, which came out to $153,580, I'm sorry, $153,527. And also, we had some additional discounts provided to us from Thompson Capital in the amount of $49,605, but the total price, purchase price, is $652,882.
Thank you.
Wanda, let me answer your question. You said that we had leased a dozer for $40,000 for a purchase this year?
Yeah, we, we've had something, we had a dozer fire earlier this year, which brought down one dozer. Then we had the track, too. We had to replace the track on the D7, which brought, we were down for like, I know, I think it was at least eight weeks. So we did lease a smaller dozer to help us with the, with, you know, what we do in regards to waste handling.
So it was a smaller dozer. What kind of timeframe did we lease that for? I know you said eight weeks at one point.
Yeah, at two months at four, yeah. And then for the 850, it was a month. It took us a month to get back up with 850.
Any other discussion? Had a motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more question. What's, what's the understood life of this dozer? What are the expectations that we have?
The last one, yeah, the last one we purchased was six, was six years ago. Let me make sure. Seven years ago. So the one that we have now, the D7 that we have now, we just replaced the track, and the reason why I won't, right now, I won't resell or, or try to auction it because, like I said, we're growing landfill. We're about to have a new C and D site, so we need that third dozer. It's about six, seven years.
And following up to Billy's question, is that life generally between seven and 15 years?
Yes, but, you know, in order to get a good resale value, you want to try to resell it within five to seven years.
Wanda, I think where Mr. Jackson was going was is that would we be better off leasing than buying?
Yeah, I mean, it's, obviously, it's not. I mean, it's like, at the rate he was doing, it's like $160,000 a year. I was trying to get the, the term of that.
Yeah, and also leasing a dozer, with leasing a dozer, I can't put it in garbage. Most, most contractors won't let me put it in garbage, so if that's the purchase one, if we're going to use it for municipal waste.
You have some more questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the learning session.
Well, Wanda and I will go ahead and say this as well. I spend a lot of time with you out there at the landfill since I'm the liaison. One thing that I think you will agree with me that we do need is a closure, enclosure to put our equipment in. We don't have that currently, so we leave all of our heavy equipment outside for the elements that, as we all know, is not good for all kinds of things when you talk about heavy equipment. So that may be something in the future that the landfill may need to look at to keep those dry.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely.
Again, I had a motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2317, approve five to zero. Resolution 2318, authorize the purchase of a 2021 truck with water tank in the amount of $113,748.70. Wanda?
Right now, we have a water truck that we bought a few years ago, but it's a big hole in the actual tank, so we are requesting to purchase a new water truck with a new, with a tank attached with the nozzle on the front in the back. We need to sometimes wet the roads because of the dust that accumulates on our access road. So we're requesting that we purchase this water truck and also tank in the amount of
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion. Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2318 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution 2319, authorize the purchase of John Deere utility tractor, loader, and cutter. Wanda?
Yes, we purchased a tractor back in 2009, a Maxi Ferguson, that has been really great and has been very reliable, but it's time to replace it. We're requesting to replace it with this John Deere, and I think Councilman Jackson asked me the horsepower, which is 115 horsepower. This is, we're going to purchase the tractor and loader and also the back wing for the, for bush hogging. And the, the amount of this purchase is $88,338.92, and this is going to be purchased through state contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion.
Thank you for all of that information. I found it, but thank you very much, Wanda.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
Aye.
Resolution 2319 is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution 2324, establish health insurance cost sharing. Joan?
Good morning, Council, Mayor. The 21 budget, we established the split for medical costs at 87, 13%, 13 to the city, 87 to the employee. There's a resolution that was passed in 2015 that requires us to apply the same cost figures to retirees. There's a significant impact in doing that, and so we're asking to delay that a year so that people can examine what their options are and make appropriate decisions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ard and a second by Mrs. Hill. Discussion. I do think we have Mr. Williams that would like to speak. Driver engineer, excuse me.
I'm, I'm here for the Fire Department Fireworks Association, and we just want to say that if it's been said in this chamber before, we don't appreciate our benefits package and the indication we do, and we're grateful for everything that y'all do for us. This increase is not going to affect me personally, but we're thinking about other city employees, you know, the guys that are pushing lawn boards and carrying wheelie, so I mean, it's going to be a bigger impact on those guys. A few years ago, when you did the pay study and compared our, our benefits package and pay to other cities, the city bragged on what a good benefits package we have, and our merit system raises were cut in half a few years ago. We were all going to share we were going to get a cost of living increase every year to offset that, so just consider that. And, once again, I heard Mr. Jackson talking about, somebody's advocating for the city too fast for the employees, we need to be, you know, we could put our lives on the line every day, not just for public safety, but, I mean, these guys on garbage trucks up and down the road. And they, Facebook the other day, you were bragging on somebody in the sanitation department, you know, that worked that job every day, been doing it for 20 years. That's kind of the voice you have in the city, and this benefits package is what keeps us where we are, so recruitment and retention is going to be big with this increase.
I'd like to add to that, and this is just a carryover, just so that...
This impacts, this resolution is...
Don't absorb this at this particular time.
This resolution is for the retirement.
So they don't absorb it at this particular time, though.
Yes, sir.
And Philip, you're absolutely right, and I've been here so long that I remember when your benefit package and the cost of it was, was much less costly to the employee than it is now. And I think that the challenge for the new council as it come in is going to be that we have to look at that because that's the way that we retain our employees, because sometimes we're not competitive with the salary that we can pay, but we can be competitive and do a better job with our benefits package. I mean, I was having a discussion with another council member the other day, and he simply said, you know, what's the point in having, you know, all new police cars if we can't keep the police personnel here? And, and so, you know, because our benefit package is not as good as it, it once was. So I think that's going to be the challenge that we have to look at in the future, so I appreciate your comments, and I think that we have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other comment? Discussion? Had a motion by Mr. Ard and a second by Mrs. Hill. Roll call, please. Bibby.
Aye.
Ard.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Herbie.
No.
Resolution 2324 is approved with a vote of four to one. Resolution 2320, approve Dambler Road emergency signal for, for new fire station call.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is for Engineering Services to design a emergency signal for the new fire station corner of Modus and Dambler Road.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three-two-zero is approved with a vote of five to zero. Carl, before you go, let's go ahead and address, I know you had called me Friday also to add something to the agenda, but we're told by, uh, I guess legal and finance that you didn't need to, but we're gonna make, uh, council and the public aware of it. Go ahead and, about the engineering...
Okay. Yes, I'm gonna, uh, employ pure right mechanically to stake some of the right-of-way and establish control points for Bibb Garrett, uh, bridge project there at Highway twenty and Bibb Garrett Road. Um, yes, thought I did need a resolution, just wanted to make y'all aware, I'm, I'm making that happen.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council on that? Resolution twenty-three-two-one authorized the mayor to execute Bibb at Garrett Aldott permits. Carl.
Uh, yeah, this is the permit application for our, our bridge project at Bibb Garrett and Highway twenty. Uh, pretty straightforward that, that we have to have it to do work in the state right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Arndt and a second by Mrs. Hill, discussion. Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three-two-one is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution twenty-three-two-two authorized the mayor to execute a consulting service agreement with TTL Incorporated for Geo-Geotechnical and Environmental Services for new construction and demolition disposal site.
Yes, Wanda Tyler, Landfill Recycling. Uh, this goes with, uh, along with the, um, conversation we just had about pure rights, uh, overseeing our, um, construction design and permitting. TTL will, uh, assist pure right with the environmental side of things. They will evaluate the waters and, and report things to the, uh, US Corps of Engineers, they'll look at the endangered species around the area and talk to, and, and, you know, make sure we are in compliance with the, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Services. Uh, they're going to do, uh, soil borings just to make sure everything is okay in regards to the soils and also, uh, any, uh, groundwater monitoring. Um, and this proposal total is in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars.
Have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kirby, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hill, discussion. Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three-two-two is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution number twenty-three-two-three declare surplus of municipal vehicles no longer needed by the fire department. Becky?
Uh, yes, Becky Thompson, purchasing department. Um, this is two trailers, uh, and, uh, one, uh, KME thumper, uh, pumpered fire truck, no longer needed by the fire department. Um, all are in good enough condition to offer on gov deals.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill, discussion. I just wanna say, Becky, you do a, just a bang-up job on that and thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Becky.
It's just amazing to watch you do it.
Thank you, it's fun.
Good. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three-two-three is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution twenty-three-two-six approved Turner Stroll's auditorium to be named C. Ronald Matthews Auditorium.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jackson and a second by Mr. Kirby. Any discussion? Do we know a timeline on that?
I think the name would be immediate, basically, uh, once it's signed up. Now, we don't have any, uh, idea about signage at this particular point, but we will bring that.
We have some funding for that.
Um, I told Mr. Jackson, we'll, I'll get with, uh, Jason.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, we'll try to figure it out.
Okay.
No, Mr. Matthews is not in great health, but still around with us, and I know that would mean a lot to his family, so...
I'm with Jason.
And I wanna commend Mr. Jackson for, um, giving him his due notification after, uh, these many years and his, uh, great thought.
That's a very long ago, thank you.
Any other...
Not pointing a finger at anybody else, I should have, well, recommended it long ago, I'll say that.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three-two-six is approved with a vote of five to zero. Ordinances, ordinance number twenty-four-four-three-one, declare surplus and sell seven-ten walnuts for Northwest, first reading ten-five-twenty. Alan.
Yes, ma'am, this is just a piece of property that, uh, the city doesn't need and we don't stop mowing it if we can, and we have someone that's interested in purchasing it to build a house on, so we recommend...
That's great.
Approval to, if, requesting y'all's approval to move forward.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mrs. Hill, discussion. Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty-four-four-three-one is approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Alan. Boards and committees, appoint Jack Bryan to the Decatur Downtown Redevelopment Board, term expiring six-twenty-one-twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hill and a second by Mr. Kirby, discussion. Roll call.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Had appointment five-zero, appointment of Marley Schmidt to the Decatur Downtown Redevelopment Board, term expiring, I'm sorry?
So move.
I thought you said something. Term expiring six-twenty-one-twenty-six. Motion by Mr. Kirby, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hill, discussion.
If any of you haven't met Marley, very outgoing, very gregarious type person, very proactive person, she'll do a good job wherever she is.
True.
Cute as a button. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Had appointments five to zero. Point Susie Wiley, excuse me, Susan Wiley to the Personnel Board, term expiring twelve-thirty-one twenty-two.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mr. Jackson, discussion. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm talking to...
Sure.
Thank you. I've had the honor of making, uh, numerous appointments during the past four years to governing bodies, so I've made, uh, two appointments to the Planning Commission, to the Housing Authority, and to the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission. Whenever I've made these appointments, with the Planning Commission appointments, I had multiple candidates that, uh, we interviewed, and I used, uh, the leadership of that department, so Karen Smith was involved whenever we interviewed the, uh, commission candidates. And then at the Housing Authority, Andy Holloway and Jeff State was involved. And then with the historic, uh, appointments, Judge Breland was involved. And, and that's been the practice that I've used, uh, through all of these appointments, and, uh, it seemed to have, it's worked well. And it allows the leader of the department or the entity to be involved in the, in the process and making sure that we select the best candidate for the, for that department and for the city. And so I guess I would, the ask, I share that, just to make sure that you, you understood how I've done it, uh, that you would consider doing the same and involving Rochelle and, uh, Ms. Salmon in this process, um, and, uh, that would probably mean that you would table and then call a special, uh, meeting to make a decision that is, uh, really good for the city. Thank you.
So, I have a question, though. You're recommending that, just like you're, I suggest for clarity, sir, you're recommending that we allow the person, Rochelle Salmon, who's Personnel Director, interview board members who will ultimately be her boss, and who can fire, who can terminate her employee at any point?
Uh, well, what I'm recommending is that she would join y'all.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to see it tabled, just for the mere fact that it came to our attention on Friday. And they're just, you know, obviously we may not agree. I think we could let the next council make this appointment, there's several people interested, and, you know, Bane's taking notes, I'm sure he'd let the general public know that there's a position on the Personnel Board, you may have others interested. I see, um, both of the applications, I even see Ms. Wiley's here, and I, I see the second page of her application from last year, but I don't see the first one. But I would just recommend that we table it, that appointment.
Would you like to make a motion or...
Sure, I'll make a motion that we table.
Motion by Mrs. Hill to table.
Second.
Second by Mr. Arndt. Roll call.
Bibby.
No.
Arndt.
Aye.
Jackson.
No.
Hill.
Aye.
Kirby.
No.
Okay, and we'll go back to the, uh, we had a motion by Mr. Kirby and a second by Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Bibby.
Aye.
Arndt.
No.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hill.
No.
Kirby.
Aye.
Appointment is three to two. We have addition D, we have Keith Metagrass.
Well, that's not necessary, no, is it?
That would only depend if the first, the pass motion...
I asked you earlier, Chuck, you said you wanted it, and so I was trying to do what you asked.
Well, it did depend on the vote, so...
Very good. All right, next ready work session will be held on October twenty-sixth at five P.M. Anything else from...
Question.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with the work session, but what is our purpose of the work session?
Well...
Because we don't have a business meeting that that work session will be applicable to.
I, I, you know, when I signed on to do this job, I signed on it to do it to the end, the next council...
And I'm okay with it.
I think the public have a, a right to know in an informed time what is on the, uh, existing agenda coming up. Mr. Jackson, who will be sitting on that council, will be at that meeting. I think you continue business until you change hands.
And, and I'm okay with that, that's what everybody wants, but decisions at that work session will be done by Mr. Jackson and four new people.
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe it should be tabled and let them review it and then decide on it, but I will not be here, I've already made that known, um, made plans in July to be out of town, so I will not be here for that work session.
I just say, read it, that's all I was going to do, is make it public, I mean, I don't have any...
It should be very short.
I'm sorry?
It should be very short.
Yeah, I agree with you, I don't think it should be long, but...
That's what, that's great, no problem.
Well, I just would like to make a comment, it's rather on the personal side. Um, I really have enjoyed serving as a council member, uh, representing the people not only in District Two, but the city, and, um, even though at times, you know, this body can agree, I've, I'm glad that we, most of the time, have agreed to disagree and can still be cordial, so, um, I really appreciate working with everyone here and meeting, um, all of our directors and employees, and I'm really proud of the work that our city employees and directors do, and just thank you, and I'm honored to be able to have said that I serve the city in this capacity, so thank you.